Go on this meeting order, this February the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, six o'clock, regular commissioner meeting. We welcome everyone. And Jeff, would you mind leading us in, Parma?
Yes, sir. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, just to ask you to be with us throughout this meeting, Lord. Oh, we pray that you just help us make the right decisions for this county and this country, Lord. Oh, we just thank you for everything that you do for us and just continue to bless this county. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We do the pledge allegiance now?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda with the additions of sale of land, board education, USDA grant number three vehicles, USDA grant number two tractor, more. Do we have a motion to approve? Or does anything need be added to it? If not, need a motion to adopt it.
I approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of financial reports. Any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve them.
I approve.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, pierces, Mr. Jack Coward, see what's come forth and ask us?
The minutes.
You need to, y'all need to approve the minutes.
Oh, okay. We didn't approve the minute. Oh, excuse me. Okay, I didn't might check wrong, I'll fall about that. I need the approval of the minutes. Everyone get a chance to look at them? If they're okay, we need a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now we move to Mr. Jack Coward with the county historian.
I'm Jack Coward. I was born here in Miller County many years ago. And I have been working on projects, repairing graves, cleaning up cemetery sites, and writing books. I've written twelve booklets similar to this on various history in Seminole, early, and Calhoun County, as well as Miller County. This particular one is about the Confederate veterans that are buried in Miller County and the units that were raised here. And we bought that. And then this is a book that I wrote. You want me to read it to you?
Yeah.
This is a list of everybody that I know buried in Miller County. In nineteen eighty, there was an attempt to make a listing of all of the people buried here. Unfortunately, there were some people left out of it, a number of people, for various reasons. And I have gone back through. I asked Danny Sheffield how many cemeteries we had in Miller County. He told me thirty-two to thirty-four. I have a list here of the rest of them, and we now have sixty-four. Many of these, some of them are lost, we'll never know where they're at. Some of them, we know where they're at. We don't have evidence of the graves that are there other than the list. And then, of course, all the active graves and cemeteries in the county. And I'll be publishing this book very, very soon, I hope. It's been a several years of the works. I have mapped the city cemetery, and I showed him what I did to Danny, and he ripped out a hundred dollar bill and handed it to me. He said, "You saved me hundreds of hours of research." People will call him, you know, where my grandmother's buried. They don't even know the name of the cemetery. I've got an index you can flip to it, turn to it, and there it is. And so we're making it a lot easier. In the city cemetery, I specifically went through and organized a mapping of the cemetery where everybody is buried and who's buried in that plot with them in that area. So I put a lot of work into this. And the reason I'm telling you this is years ago, there was a book that was written on Miller County history up to nineteen eighty. At that time, the county historian, Ms. Davis, completed that work, and it was published. My father helped her do that. And those books are getting now sold out. There's only a few left. I have about, well, a stack over in my house that, to my knowledge, is the only ones left. I'm trying to update that to twenty twenty. I'm trying to catch up an extra forty years of history there. I feel like somebody needs to do this, and so I've taken it upon myself to get it done. What I'm asking the county to do tonight, if you would consider it, I'd like the title, County Historian. When I publish a book, whether of any sort, that has to do with Miller County, I'd like to put on there, I'm the Miller County Historian. I think would help in the sales of the book and in reference to other events that I go to. So that's what I'm asking. If you would give me that title, I could use it to publicize the books.
Anybody got any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. I think, I thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir. So we need a motion to allow him to be the Miller County historian.
I'll make the motion. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. You are now the Miller County historian.
Thank you. By the way, I do want to say this. I have all people, black and white, in this book. And I have worked hard at that. And if they're military, I try to mark that and note that. And so it covers all of the cemeteries in Miller County, not just some of them. Thank you for you. You work great.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, we have whole business, fueling center report, pages twenty-four to twenty-five.
Everything good? I just want to let y'all know we did have to take the first payment out of T-Spot to pay for the fueling center, so that's been done. And other than that, it's functioning as well. Still, we haven't had to take any money out to for its operations.
Okay, next on the agenda, on old business, senior building construction.
So on that, me and Mr. Jerry went over there and met with, Carol's actually doing the work. It's not his son. So he had a crew over there, and to my knowledge, they've already basically tore out the walls. They're putting it back now. So we should have a complete building probably in about three weeks.
Yeah, Mr. Claude, I spoke with him over the weekend, and him and the other seniors, they're very happy with the progress. They're happy.
And to speak on the creating them an organization, so the hospital reached out to me, and they've asked Danny Shepherd to go ahead and start that process, and he's going to do it. And I told him that you guys approved to pay for that. So we're going to get together and find out what has been, when he's starting that process to get it, to actually get that done.
Okay, any questions on it? All right, next on the agenda, recreation department resolution, pages twenty-seven through thirty.
That's the resolution that you guys wanted drafted up. If you look at it, on page twenty-nine, it tells you basically how the makeup of the board would be. Chairman of the county commissioner, a commissioner appointed by the board, county manager, the mayor, and the chairman. And it reads down there on the terms. You know, with the chairman being a one-year term, it would actually be voted on every year. And then, like I say, me and Cory, depending on if we were, we left or not, you would have to do that. And I think the mayor would be in every four-year term. So that's how we would do that. So basically, it's just, that's the resolution that we had drafted up, and just if you guys approve it tonight, then I'll get it to the city manager, and they'll put it on their agenda.
Okay, do we need to look at the other board appointment tonight? The other commissioner, do we need to look at that appointment tonight for the board?
You can if you want, yes, sir.
Anybody want to volunteer for it? They won't speak one time now.
The meetings will be the thirtieth of each month, and it's usually a noon meeting, so whoever wants to do that.
Okay. Well, we can wait, y'all can think it around a little bit, and we'll give them an answer in a few days or something. But do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. New business, the county attorney. We have three different ones here to choose from. Y'all see the names? We have Wes Baldwin, Donaldson Bill, Maile Phillips Lee Cockwood, and William Mills Blakely, the current county attorney. Do we have a motion on which one, Mr. Baldwin was looked at, and everything seemed to come up really good with him? Doug spoke to him. Doug, you got any comments on any of them?
I spoke to all of them. The, Mr. Mills, he just sent a letter to you guys to send your packet. I spoke to Maile and Wes Baldwin. They both pretty much wanted to build the same way. As you see on there, the only conflict was Maile did say that she's probably going to represent somebody that, that may, there may be a suit. I don't know if there is or not, but Baldwin said he, he's actually the city solicitor, and he's the city attorney for Princeton and Arlington, I believe it is. So he didn't have any, any conflicts up here?
Yeah. If, we appreciate everything Mr. Mills has done. It's just a comment case of we're all going to get an answer out every time. And I would recommend that we look at Wes Baldwin. You know, y'all please, have you, you say so about this thing.
I read over that. I was going to select Wes Baldwin myself.
Anyone else got anything to say? We'll call for a motion. If not, anyone else, we'll call for a motion for Mr. Baldwin.
I will, I do want to say this. I have very close ties with Maile, very, very close ties with Maile, and I just, I need to.
Okay. You want to abstain from voting? Okay. All right, so we have a motion for him, or y'all want to pick another one here? Or you want to say, well, Mr. Mills? So in there down the field there with Maile, she said that she maybe going to be representing someone, so it may be a conflict of interest for her.
Yeah, I think so.
Nothing personal, yes.
No, 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 no. I know.
She got a real good looking resume. She has a real good looking resume.
I, I hate that because she's local. She would get us what we need as soon as we need it. I mean, I hate that.
So do we have a motion on who y'all want to choose?
I'm going to go with Mr. Baldwin.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Baldwin. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor? Motion carried. County survey the holidays. The donkeys bet the county employees vote on which way they wanted to go with this thing on the holiday. And I'm trying to find it. And it was overwhelmingly decided by the full-time employees, by, let's say, eighty-three percent responsible. What is, I mean, it was just part of it anyhow, to make long story short, it was overwhelmingly decided by them that they wanted to keep it like it is. So has anyone else got any, any comments?
I do. I just, the survey really didn't ask the question of, did we want to adopt the holiday? It asked the question of, do you want to change that holiday for something else? And the next question was, do you want to give up your Christmas, one of your Christmas days? So it really didn't ask the question of, do you want the holiday? The question was never asked. So with that, I'm going to sustain from voting from it because I'm for the holiday. So, I mean, the survey to me didn't do any good. I mean, it never asked the question of, do you want to adopt the holiday? It just asked, do you want to switch it, or do you want to drop one of your days for the holiday? If the question would have been on there, do you want to adopt the holiday as a federal holiday? Then I think the survey would have served the purpose, and it didn't, in my opinion.
All right, anybody up, got any comments on it?
I mean, can we, can we send it back out as is and then add that on there and see what the response is from that?
You can. You just need to decide. Because see, at the last meeting, you guys didn't, you guys wanted to see about replacing that Christmas day.
Swapping it out.
So what you need to do is, if you want to do it, we need to put it back out. You need to say, do you want to add this in addition to your days? Unless we plan on taking a day, y'all need to decide how you want to do that.
Do y'all want to make a motion? Do y'all want to make a motion to do that?
I'll make it.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, motion carried. We will send out another voting survey.
So just to make it clear, you want to, you want to leave the two questions on, and then add, do you want to add this as a holiday? Is that what y'all want to do?
Yes, because the question was never asked, do they want the holiday?
Well, I know, but you said when y'all did it last time, y'all didn't say that. You just said, do you want to see if you want to replace that?
If you want to swap the holiday.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the question was. So I mean, I need to make sure we're at, do you want to add the date? And then leave the other two on there.
And, and I think that the main reason we were doing it that way, let me make sure I'm correct on this, is because that's going to be what, I mean, that's a large, if we add it, that's another large amount of money coming out. Is that correct?
It's not really that much more of a money. It's just productivity. They're all, because then if you think about it, you add that one, you're going to have to keep adding days.
But you know, you've got Veteran Day, you've got, you know, a lot of important days, you know, that the federal.
Like Cook County does, do the state, they, they, they put on their website, we follow state holidays. And, and that takes the commissioners out of voting, because every time the state adds one, you, you have to honor it. So I mean, there's a way to do that way. There's a way to just put the survey out, let them do that. Or you can say, we, we honor federal, and then whatever the federal days are, some, some of the state will take, you can do so. You've got three different options, you know? You can keep continuing to vote on the days, let the employees help. Or you can go and say, we just do state, or we just do federal, however y'all want to do it.
Anyone got any suggestions?
Well, I'm the one who had suggested the floating holiday, simply, I mean, I talked to a coworker of mine. Her husband works for a really big, really big company, and that's kind of what they do. So with that floating holiday, and maybe, maybe it's something that we could, instead of taking a day for, from Christmas, because there are so many different, I mean, there are so many different holidays that are not observed. Veterans Day, you know, being one of them, June tenth, whatever, we could use a floating holiday if we're going to add one. And then they could use it for any, that floating holiday, they could use for any holiday they wanted to use it for. So if they wanted it for, for Juneteenth, they could. If they wanted it for Veterans Day, they could. That way, it's fair across the board to everybody.
You kind of asked that already.
But no, we were talking about taking a Christmas, one of the Christmas days away. This is adding a day.
Well, they going to vote you out on that if they go.
Well, I know, but, but, but this is the thing, that yes, they are, exactly.
We got to send that out.
They are going to vote yes. I mean, I would vote yes, too, but if we add Juneteenth, then we're going to have people coming and wanting Veterans Day.
You may as well knock it all out at once.
Yes.
Because not you're going to be back.
We're going to be adding all days. So that's what.
I think we're at ten, and they're at fourteen, maybe, eleven, thirteen, something like that.
I have the list. It's in my phone.
Because it's like, good luck with the President's Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day. So there's four X in Juneteenth, there's five that we don't, that, that the other day.
Well, now you got to admit, everybody going to vote for that if you don't.
Well, I know.
They, they will. But I, I think I'm, I'm trying to, in some way, kind of help out, because if we adopt one, then we're going to.
Exactly.
You're not going to stop this.
It's not. It's right.
Make it floating, and then everybody can pick which one.
Yes, yes.
I think that's the answer to it right there.
That'll work.
But give them the option, give them the option.
But they need to let people know ahead of time, 'cause you don't want three or four in the office taking the same day and then shut that office down, do you?
Well, I think Doug had, um, mentioned that the manager of that branch would be in charge of that.
I mean, you need to go tell your department head, hey, I'm taking this off, 'cause it's gonna cause, it kinda's gonna cause a problem for you, 'cause if she don't know it, she don't pay them, then...
Alright, so, so if you do that, and let's just say, let's just use Andy, and Andy says, I'm gonna take June, we gonna take Juneteenth off. And they don't get the choice of their birthday, or President's Day, or Columbus Day, or Veterans Day.
Yeah, they do get a choice, they got an option, but, but if...
Not if he decides he gonna take Juneteenth, they only get that one day, 'cause he gonna...
Yeah. But that's a floating, what she's saying is, it's gonna be a floating day, so if he took Juneteenth and you take your birthday and you take President Day...
Well, he can't take, he can't have half his crew take Juneteenth, and the other half can't.
He's a PTO guy.
You see what I'm saying?
What he's saying, it, his department.
Yeah, his department, if he says we gonna take Juneteenth.
No, it's each employee.
No, each employee.
Oh, I thought y'all said the head was gonna decide.
The head would track it.
Okay, oh, okay, oh, okay, alright, alright, I'm with y'all, I'm just making sure.
Turn it in that this guy to this day has a holiday, where he'll get paid for a holiday.
Okay, well, y'all good with the floating holiday then?
So this is an additional day added.
Additional day added, and it will be, uh, floating holiday, and they would decide to use it however they want.
Is it, it have to, let me ask just on payroll, does it have to be one of those other holidays with their birthday, or somebody just take a random Wednesday and say that's it?
No, 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 it's, uh, no, yeah.
Whatever state, they need to be able to pick from one of those.
Okay.
But, but that, there'll be plenty on card.
So we're gonna allow them to have one floating holiday per employee, is that correct, that will be it?
And not take any from Christmas.
Right.
Right, right. Okay, y'all good with that? Well, we'll give us a motion, and we need a motion to go forward, or?
I'll make a motion.
I'll have a second.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. USDA list of current officials, page forty-seven, forty-eight.
We just have to have that to, to finish out the USDA loan we're, we're completing now.
Okay.
So they had to have an updated list, so before we leave, I just need you guys to sign the, the list.
So no action to be carried?
No, just, just sign it.
USDA approval letter.
Same way with that, that just shows you guys that it was approved, everything that is, is, is finished up, and we're just waiting on the check out.
Okay. Hospital board's appointment. So they need three names, is that correct?
Yes, or they want three names submitted, and they would, uh, pick at their next meeting, which is the twenty-eighth of February.
Okay, we need three names to submit.
It has to be commissioners.
We want to have the name put on the list. I'll put my name down if I saw y'all.
I'll do it.
Alright, Layton, we need one more.
Put mine on, you want two?
Commissioner Jeff Cox, that'll be the three, if everybody good with it.
I'm good.
Congressman Bishop, big check presentation, page fifty-six.
Okay, on this, um, I was called by Congressman Bishop's point man, Paul Frye, and they're gonna do like they did the city, they're gonna present a big check, and they would like to have all the commissioners here, if you can, it's on a Friday, the twenty-fourth, ten AM, as of right now, he, he confirmed that with me. Um, location's still, I, I still, we're still working whether we're gonna do it at the emergency services building or here.
For February the twenty-fourth, ten AM.
Two, two Fridays from now.
Okay.
You better remind me.
Yeah, me too.
And then, and I just need to know, because you know, three of all commissioners, I just have to put a, a thing up, says, hey, they're, they're...
What day's that, on Friday, then?
Okay, the next one is technology fee. Says here's probate court judge, but Josh.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Representative Green called me last week and, uh, asked if we did a technology fee for our filings in our office, so everything that's filed in probate or magistrate court. I told him that we do not, and, uh, he said he wanted to bring that to my attention, he was writing some local legislation for some surrounding counties, um, in this session to add that to their fees. Um, basically what it does, it, it sound, it's exactly what it sounds like, is a fee tacked on to the filing, that would accrue and be available to update our computers, our servers, anything to do with technology in my office, which we have a good bit of. You taught Austin and, uh, and realized pretty quickly that we're behind on a few things, we're not in terrible shape, but we could, we could upgrade some, and, um, this fee would keep me from having to budget that money.
What kind of money you talking about?
Uh, I believe the way, and, and it should be in your packet, a draft, that his attorney drafted up, I think it says up to ten dollars per filing. So in, in the probate, when you're talking about a five or six hundred dollar filing, it's a, it's a small portion of it. Um, but it would accrue over time and it would, it would save taxpayer dollars.
That going to your account, will that go into your account?
It would, it would go into the regular account, we just keep track of it through, uh, one of our programs to make sure that that money was set aside for that one specific act. Um, he did mention he wanted to come in front of, you know, commissioners first, and he doesn't, uh, typically proceed on dropping a bill unless it's unanimous. To me, it's a no brainer, but, um, I proceed how y'all want. Y'all got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So do we need to take a vote, uh, for these?
If you wanna do it, you need to go ahead and make a motion.
Y'all ain't got any discussion over? Do we have a motion to adopt that?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And that's, just to be clear, that's for, uh, what you have in front of you is for magistrate, the bill for, what you have in front of you for probate. The bill for magistrate is the exact same, only with magistrate, and it mirrors that, but y'all have that, 'cause his attorney wasn't done with it, so is this vote for both?
Okay, well, we need to make a motion to adopt both of them, man. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried for both of them.
Thank y'all, y'all getting it.
Okay, got the partners, y'all wanna go ahead and discuss this addition to the agenda now? Alright, we got, do we need to, uh, land sale, do we need to?
I got Ja- Jamie's here, she can, she can kinda, kinda talk y'all a little bit about it.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Um, real simple, um, in November of nineteen fifty-two, um, there was a parcel of twelve point four acres of land, it's all ball fields. It was deeded, um, to the Board of Education, and the city and the county are also named on that original land deed, and we were unaware in the last two years, as we were trying to get this land redeveloped, um, and put back on the taxpayer list, that the city and the county had interest in the property. So, um, that attorney found that last week and contacted me and asked if I would reach out. Um, there's a couple of different ways to handle this, but I feel like the most streamlined way to handle this right now is to get the county, and I've had the very same discussion with the city, and we'll be at their city council meeting next Tuesday, um, to get each board to convey their interest for that Board of Education property on a document to the Board of Education, and that way the closing can go ahead and go through, and the Board of Education, um, can sell and close on that property to the developer for the forty-four unit apartment complex, which is called Spring Ridge. Trying to get used to saying that, so it'll stick. But, um, I'm here to answer any questions, it's really simple, like I said, it was just a, a small little hurdle in the paperwork that was found.
Any discussion, any questions over? We need a motion to approve it. Get things right.
Let me ask Jamie, so...
Yes.
Um, would the Board of Education's lawyer draw up that, that form that we can sign, so we wouldn't need to do anything?
So it's actually not the Board of Education's attorney, um, it's, it's the, and I have their name. It's a, a firm in Jacksonville that the developer is using.
As long as they drafted it, we, we could sign it, so we don't have to get our attorney.
They said they wanted to make it as easy as possible, and whatever we needed as the city or the county to just reach out, so they have a template for that document. But the starting point, of course, was to, for the board commissioners to have a vote saying that they would convey the interests on that property to the Board of Education for the betterment of the community.
Okay.
Um, that, uh, so everybody has different attorneys, and y'all have a different attorney as of tonight, too, but, um, yeah, so just contacting those attorneys with that template from the Jacksonville Attorney's Office.
Okay, we have a motion to proceed forward with signing over property.
Well, I'd like to talk to our attorney before we sign anything over.
So, y'all, I can get it, I can get it done.
What kinda timeframe are they?
As quickly as possible, um, so this development is actually coming by way of a state incentive program, um, it's through the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, um, there was a press release, I can get y'all's some more information about it, but, um, it never, in, in the conversations about, um, this development, um, it started in March of twenty-one, there's never been any information about any interest besides support of education on that piece of property. Except for the Georgia Power, there's a little easement there that's less than an acre, but, um...
Y'all will have the attorney look at it then, and then proceed forward.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure we covered, I, I, we don't, we don't foresee any trouble.
To, to Wesley? Yes, I can, and if you wanted to have a conversation with the attorney handling the closing as well, or the developer's attorney.
We just put them to it.
Yeah, we let them to talk, yeah.
Yeah, that'd probably be the most efficient again, um, would there be any way to handle it before the next board meeting?
Oh, yeah, I think we do this in the next week or so, Bill, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, I'll get with you Doug on all that information, so I appreciate y'all's time tonight, thank you.
Alright, next on this, USDA grant number three, the vehicles.
Yeah, I guess. And what was this, what was this grant for?
Oh, the vehicles.
Trucks.
I've talked to some of them, the board, not everybody, but, um, and some of them actually saw the trucks that I'm talking about. Got one that I've already decommissioned, just out there side of the fence, and we got two more that we gonna have to take them off the road. I mean, th- these trucks are just, they're war slam out, one of them's an eighty-six Ford. We've already scrapped it twice and had to pull it back out and put it back in commission, but it's pretty much ready for the boneyard, and we got another one that is right behind. I'd like to try to use this grant and try to upgrade three of the trucks. And, um, you know, we took some quotes, and it'd be close to what we would have to pay would be about sixty, sixty-five thousand, and the grant paid fifty thousand. And we're getting three trucks for around twenty thousand dollars apiece. And it's nothing that'll happen overnight, um, we've talked to some of the dealers and said the Ford place here is probably eight months out before they could even have the trucks, I don't know, but, I mean, I'd like to see if we could go forward with at least applying for the grant and start working on it, 'cause I got three trucks that's gonna be set inside the fence. And one of them goes to the limb cutter every day, and one of them goes to the mowing tractors every day.
Well, y'all already got two out there in the fence, like you did.
Well, I got two, but I mean, I wasn't trying to replace, I got actually two three-fifties that I put in the scrap iron being, that hadn't been replaced, too, but I mean, we can't replace everything at one time, but we gotta start somewhere. And, um, they, we're getting by with what we got, but we're not gonna be getting by when these trucks go down and they're out there side of the fence, I mean, they're loaded with all the tools and air compressors and diesel tanks and cut torches that these guys need out there every day to work with. And when they go down, I mean, it's hard for us, they're shorthanded, we aren't gonna be running back and forth trying to take care of them when they get into some wire, stuff like that, we kinda got them self-contained. Without these trucks, they're not gonna be self-contained. They're, they're, they're gonna become something that we have to carry out and go back and get every day, and then they don't have the tools to take care of a small problem to keep them going all day. So, I mean, that's, it's up to y'all, but uh, we were trying to look at fleet trucks, we have, we have a fleet number, we've had a hard time. With, with Dodge, they're the only one that's got any fleet trucks right now. Ford Chevrolet does not have any, but they've all given some pretty reasonable price to kinda compensate that, if y'all want to...
So, so if you apply for this grant, it's gonna be six months before you...
Well, that, I mean, the trucks are not gonna be no faster than the grant, so I mean, but Chevrolet and Ford really doesn't have, they don't even have a future for a fleet truck, which Dodge does, but we've had some complications with our numbers coincide to use their fleet numbers, so, um, we've kinda just taken a basic price from all of them, and what, what I've looked at, the Ford place here in town is the cheapest. Um, they've offered us two regular cab pickup trucks, long wheelbase, there's no bells and no whistles, and one cab and chassis, um, thirty-five, or three-fifty with a Ford, um, they're, I got the quotes, they're, I think a hundred and fifteen thousand for the Dodge, a hundred and nineteen for Chevrolets, and I think it's ninety, about ninety-four thousand for the Fords, and that, which I got the quotes, I mean, if y'all want to look at them, you're more than welcome to look at them, um. I'm sure those prices are gonna change in eight months, but, you know, if we don't start now. I mean, the grant's that far out, the trucks are that far out, and we gotta try to make these run eight more months. Um, and they're not gonna get in, they're not getting in, in, in better shape. We've had them, you know, a long time, and we've run them a long time, and they're just war slam out.
But Andy is maxed out in his splosh, river splosh, so it would need to come out the T-splosh for him to be able to do it. And he's got a good bit of money in there.
But that's the money we use for paving.
Do what?
The T-splosh money.
Oh, yes, um, I've talked to some of them, and I'd be more glad to talk to some of y'all, I kinda sat up, sat down with some of them, and we ac- actually have looked over a plan that I put together for a nine to twelve month plan. And basically this nine to twelve month plan will, it'll use some money, but it'll put some equipment on the yard, we get some jobs done, and if, if, if we had to touch a little bit of the money that we got, which is close to a half a million dollars, something like that, if we had to touch a little bit of it, it would be thirty, forty thousand dollars of it, and that would be putting a, a good bit, some limb cutting equipment, the trucks, the tractor mower, um, another limb cutter, the fuel station payment, and we would, we, we would come up a tad short on having enough money for our match to pave with for that twelve months, that we might would have to dip into some of the money that's in the bank. So I mean, you'd use up kinda a twelve month of money, but you wouldn't be touching really any of the money.
It's already accumulated.
That's already accumulated, it would still be sitting there. And I mean, we haven't been using it for much, anything but pave. Um, and this plan, if, you know, y'all want me to really put it together for you to look at it? Some of the rest of them have, have seen it, 'cause we sat down and talked about it a little bit. Um, I think Layton knows that limb cutting has become a very big thing in the county, and this would put two more machines on, we'd have two machines on this side, two machines on the other side. And that would really help cut back some, some trees and kinda get the roads open back up, it'd get us some pickups to run back and forth to these machines. We'd have good tractors and mowers to run, fueling station payment would be paid, and we would be just a tad short on our match money to do our, our yearly paving, just like we've always done. And not touch, but if we touched fifty thousand out of what we got already saved up, that would probably be the max. Um, and there's some prices in here that give or take because of the, of the time limit. So I couldn't guarantee that they would hold good, but we've been looking at the prices.
But you're not talking about buying all this? But you're not talking about buying all this equipment?
No, I mean, there's no way we can buy it all at one time. I'd like to, the tractor and mower, we kinda already, kinda wanted to start getting that in motion, you know, for the grant.
You already got, you already got the other one, right?
I got one, and when you put it in motion, it's not coming about, they're not gonna all hit it one time, it's a gradual thing that'll work you down the road, but at the end of twelve months, you'll be about left the money you got saved up along, and you'll be put a good bit of stuff there that we actually need, and some equipment that we need to get the roads cut back, cause that, that's a big priority right now with everybody. Cars going down dirt roads, farmers going down dirt roads, us going down the dirt roads, I mean, the dirt roads just growed up. One machine is not gonna, one machine's not gonna catch us back up. We got to put more stuff out there. And we got, right now, we running two, we running a side arm mower behind the tractor, it's not getting the top, but it's doing a lot for the bottom, and cars are not having as much trouble. Um, you know, some of the equipment's not as tall, and it's not getting the tall stuff for the peanut peers and cotton peers, but what it does do is it cuts a lot of stuff out the way that when the limb cutter gets to that road, there's a lot of stuff there that's already gone that he don't have to cut. So it's kinda doubling his time, he's getting down that road faster, where he can go cut another road. Like I said, we kinda, some of us have sat down and talked and tried to put together a plan to start working on. Um, limb cutting is just something that we need to really focus on, and then we have a few projects that we need to focus on.
What about you, uh, think you gonna need another motor grader?
We got one coming up due, and I don't have enough quotes to, um.
That's gonna have to come out the splosh too?
Well, it's, we gonna turn one in, take one back, you know, and that payment's already.
There'll probably be a little more.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit more.
How much more you think it's gonna be?
About, what, what was that lady?
How much more you think it's gonna be? I know it ain't no cheaper.
I'll be paying four or something for it now, it's probably gonna be around five.
You may have four for the John Deere, I think you're paying.
Thirty-eight, twenty.
It's gonna be around five. I've looked at it already and started working on it, and I got some of it, and as y'all know the interest rate, some of y'all know the interest rate's really high. I haven't got all the quotes on it, but I turned around what I did get, I turned around and recalled them, and I asked them to call back to their financing people and see if they wouldn't drop the interest rate. You know, try to help us some on that price, and actually, it dropped the price of the machine four hundred dollars a month with the second quote, and I have both of those quotes. But, um, you know, I called them back and I said, hey, you know, y'all killing us, you gotta try to do something to help us.
I think we probably need to see all that before we make a decision on all this other thing, you know what I mean?
I mean, it's gonna add a thousand dollars a month to, to splosh money, you know, and, um, this, this money that we.
Twenty-four hundred a month?
About twenty-four hundred a month.
Just the lowest, just the lowest, just the lowest one.
Yeah, on that one, that's right. Well, I mean, these were, we're not buying apples for apples there either, cause, um, on those motor graders, I swapped ditching blades three years, you know, three times on them, that's sixty-five thousand dollars, you can't do that anymore. The everything, the motor graders, ditching blades, all changed. We save that money when we could, but can't do it now, you know? And, you know, I mean, splosh money, taking care of that, and this money we're talking about, the plan is all gonna be T-splosh money.
I know it take Doug to forget approval of a grant and then actually receive the fifty thousand dollar on the grant.
The approval will probably come about six months later. Right now, once I turn this paper in to that lady, we're gonna get that check last March, so you're looking at twelve months to get, to get your check. Now, I'm not saying, I mean, they could have sped up, but the go with rates probably nine months to twelve months.
Well, we gonna be actually collecting this T-splosh this whole time and not spending any of it until, so you're gonna continue to accumulate more and more in your T-splosh.
Well, we'll, we should know, I mean, pretty regular, cause what she told me was, on that USDA program, usually you're not turned down at all. It's, cause it's a match and you spend it half a year, so you won't be turned down. It's just a matter of how many they got, how quick they can get your check.
But now the splosh, we're, we're at the limit now.
And I, I, I do underst- understand that. I, I've looking at all the options on these motor graders. I've looked, I'm looking at dropping down to one size smaller and looking at the, the size we run now. And another option that, you know, I'm trying to get them to put together for y'all to look at, I'm, I mean, I see it, but it's y'all's decision. The motor grader that we have now, I don't know what the buyback is on it. And we're looking into seeing if we can buy an extended warranty on it. And it may be an option to keep the one we got now. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to buy it back, but that's a lot less, lot less money, and if we can put a warranty on it, run it three more years, some of this may change. Um, I mean, that may get us down the road further, because this other stuff that I, that I was mentioning, the trucks, the limb cutters and things like that, these are things that's coming that they're gonna have to happen. I mean, you, you can't let it all just die. I mean, and, and we've run it for, most of our stuff, we've run fifteen years. And, I mean, it's, it's just come to the point where we got to start somewhere replacing some of it, or it's not gonna be running.
So on the trucks you're saying?
And the limb cutting machine, we should have done this long time ago, we should have had more than one machine running. I mean, one machine cannot cover six hundred miles of road. So we covered, we covered three hundred miles of dirt road, which has two sides. He's got to cover six hundred miles of road. And I'm sure Laden, Alan, Jeff, T, that, the, the farmers, they're, it's getting more and more every day that, you know, they're coming, coming demanding. That they're getting to where they can't go to their feet.
Well, I just wanna say this, and I don't know about Christine, I don't know if you've talked to Christine about it, but I, I don't understand a lot of this, and so I, I won't, like, I want you to explain this to me. So I don't have a problem with the grants, and I know that the county needs, I mean, I know we do for the roads, I know you need it, but I, I'd rather hear it than it be thrown at me at the meeting when I don't understand it anyway.
Right.
And then you, I mean, it's like, and I'd rather you pick up the phone and call me and explain it to me, because when you just tell me in five minutes, I don't understand, I mean, like, I need to understand it. And I don't have a problem with it all, I just wanna understand it.
Right, that's why I didn't, you know, I mean.
Especially when you tell us that you need all this stuff and you ain't bought nothing in fifteen years, but then you need all this stuff.
All this at one time, and that's a lot, I mean.
What I was telling you was things that we need, but I'm saying it's gonna, you know, we need to start working on it and maybe use this grant. And none of it's gonna come tomorrow. You know, I wasn't asking you to buy anything tomorrow, I'm just kinda discussing with you to, let's try to start. We got to start somewhere. I mean, the tractor mower thing, we had already kinda supposedly had started on that, but the truck thing was the next thing, you know, you know, maybe we could at least apply for it.
Well, we just bought a lot of trucks, didn't we? Didn't you just get some? Just one? You got one?
We, we bought that service truck, but see, I lost the truck, you know, cause they totaled it up, and the rest of my trucks are.
So you lost one because it was in the wreck?
That's right, and we replaced it.
That's good information to know.
And so this is what I would like to know. This, I mean, I don't know about the rest of them, but I would like for you to tell me what you have already right now.
Like, if you got a truck going to the limb cutter, you got one going to the motor grader, if you got one going to the excavator, what's hooked to the gooseneck, what's hooked to the?
That's.
And what is?
You're just about naming.
I gotta know, she don't know, she don't.
I don't know.
Over the years, see, they've deteriorated, deteriorated away, because there was a lot of years that.
But you said you was running a eighty-six model truck or something like that, that's, that's crazy to me that we were, we were letting you run a eighty-six.
I had no idea we were doing that.
Yeah, it's about, it's about.
You'd probably be really amazed, and some of the things I'm probably gonna tell you, you probably don't wanna hear, but it's, it's come to the point to where we got by as, as many years as we could, saving as much money as we could, just like the motor grader thing. I swapped ditching blades for three years, you know, this ditching blade on this motor grader, three times that we traded it, I swapped that ditching blade out.
She probably don't know they's different sized motor graders. She probably thought they was one size motor grader.
And now, when they changed, just like they changed the body style on a pickup truck. When that changed, that eliminated me from swapping, well, I saved sixty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand times three. Cause I did it on all three motor graders. Now it's caught up with, you know, and that's a, that's a lot, you know, and I can't help that. But I also can't help, we hadn't replaced a bunch of this stuff in fifteen years too. And, and this, and, and to be honest, the limb cutter and the three motor graders has been a challenge, you know, keeping them going, and that's why we've run equipment for fifteen years and not replaced it. But now is time, if you don't start now and start coming up with something to start moving down the line, you're gonna have stuff that's gonna quit on you and it's not gonna be running anymore.
No, and I agree with that. What I would like to see though is what, like I said, what we have, what this, what we need, and what we're needing in the future coming up.
Like a five-year plan.
Yes, and then that way.
Do y'all wanna have him let him get all of his, his information up?
I think it'd be beneficial for Jeff too, cause I bet Jeff don't have a clue about what we got.
Let him come present and tell you guys what.
I think that's a great idea, and then we can, then we can prioritize what we need.
Right.
And then instead of coming each meeting saying we need something.
We can't just sit here and do nothing. We need to come up with a plan to start.
Well, we need to have a plan where you ain't running a eighty-six model pickup.
Right.
Yeah, it was heavily used when it was bought.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, I have no doubt, I mean.
See, getting back to them trucks you was talking about, you're saying that we could get three of them for roughly, what?
Sixty thousand.
Forty, uh, forty-four thousand, when are you?
Well, ninety thousand dollars, and you're gonna get fifty of that.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna buy, you're gonna buy three trucks for fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And I, I'm not saying buy them tomorrow, cause they're not gonna come. I'm just saying, and, and I agree with what you said, and I touched base with some of them because they were available to sit down and talk to, and I was bringing that to them to get us to this point to where I want to put us together a plan for all y'all to see, but I kinda explained the plan a little bit and just for you.
I think when you do this plan, I, I think like your excavator, what model it is, what, you know, like the year models and like, so we know how old everything is. Like your dump truck, I know we bought a new dump truck, then, but we bought a used dump truck too, right?
Right, and right now, I mean, everything I got, pretty much come here with me, and I've been here almost sixteen years, about. Pretty much everything that we running, when I come here, I bought it, and, and we got some things that, you know, still in fairly good shape, but then we've used some, some more.
Yeah.
Um, I just want us all to get on the same page.
Me too.
Start getting a plan, because everything, it doesn't matter what you want, if you want a tractor and a mower, if you want anything. Right now, you're looking at six, seven months on pretty much anything that you want. But we got to come up with, right now, I got some equipment that's running and is good equipment, but if the guy don't have a pickup truck to go out there to it. Basically, and, and some of this comes, kinda comes about quickly, because a truck can develop a problem overnight that is gonna become a catastrophic problem that you wouldn't expect. And that's sort of kinda how the truck deal got throwed up.
Well, you knew that eighty-six wasn't gonna run forever now.
Actually, Laden, that's the best truck.
Let me know this out there here, bud. Um, so, so you have several options. I mean, I don't know if you guys heard about the lease program that you may wanna look at that and kinda rotate vehicles every so often, cause I know the Sheriff's Department's looking at it. You may also wanna look at, the city's actually fixed to sell their entire fleet, because they went to. May we look at that if you, if you need a vehicle immediately. Cory said he would hold it for us if, if y'all wanted to look at it.
Can we put together a workshop and meet and do that?
So, y'all, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be beneficial for everyone.
It's just there are several options that you, you can do. I mean, if you need vehicles now, they've got vehicles. Now, I know the Sheriff's is looking at, they, that, the transport van they've got up there, they're willing to sell that too. So, I mean, they're, they're willing to hold all their vehicles and give us a first shot, or we can wait twelve months for.
So when the city gets rid of theirs, they'll have some vehicles.
Or we can go to the lease program like they're, I mean, I, I.
Can you put us something together in a week or two, or?
Now, if you purchase one from the city, the grant hold?
I don't think so. Let me look at it, let me talk to her.
I know it says new and used equipment, but I don't know about buying it from.
If it's going from government to government, they may, they may allow that. And if that's the case, I mean, you may can get a whole lot more than three for the price that you're talking.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, Doug and I talked about that another day, and he called Cory, and we didn't know then, you know, whether that was an option or. We got to look at some, some option, but this grant being out there.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna buy much used for, that is in real good shape for twenty thousand dollars when you're buying new.
But I think, I think the, uh, the grant, if I'm not mistaken, you can buy used stuff too.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I think you're right.
I still find out can you buy from a private, private person.
Yes.
But as Ms. Nikki said, I would be more than glad for us, I'd really like for us all to sit down.
We'll do that two weeks off, off schedule.
I'd like to do a project in a district area court. You know, that's something, right now, being, that was kinda brought up, Ms. Christine, Griffin Sherfield Road, we have got to take that road off, and I mean, we.
I say we just close it, it's always trouble.
I, I got, I got.
Phone calls over the weekend for that road, nightmare.
There's so many things that's changed up and down that road right there that it's just about got everybody cut off.
Yeah.
Um, it'll take, I got a quote in here, take around ninety-five hundred dollars worth of pipe.
Ooh.
And, which I mean, pipes are real expensive, that's not a lot of pipe, but that project right there, take about ninety-five hundred dollars worth of pipe. We'll get, um, Griffin Sherfield, you don't have to do a lot of building.
You talking about that end, you talking about where it comes into Kelly Road down there?
That, that's one section, but I mean, then.
And then on the part over there after you pass that church.
On the Baker County Inn section, there's three, there's actually three sections in there.
Yeah, past pops on round by the church in.
Go run it shortcut.
I actually had someone call my phone, they had to walk home in the dark, cause they couldn't get their car through. So they literally parked their car and walked home to up there to pop.
Run that pop from another way.
Yeah, and so he called me, and, um, I spoke to her, and, and, uh, me and Andy got together and, and, um, they made it where she can go and get her car the next morning, but she literally walked in the dark, so we need to get that road fixed.
That, there's so much water coming out that field right there, there's actually some big pipes there, but there's no way to keep them open. You won't even know they're there, because it just fills them in with sand.
Right.
The only way I know to fix that, we've worked on it at several different times over the years and can't get what's there to work. Only way I know to do is come in there and build a road up higher than the field, and then put pipes in the road, and the water have no choice but to go through the pipes. It's gonna take time, the, down there on Griffin Sherfield, that Kelly Crossing. You got from that big drainage ditch, that ditch needs to be rerouted. Um, you know, it, they, they did hit it that big old ditch into the road, it needs to make a turn and cut a ditch and carry it down to Kelly Crossing, and then cross Griffin Sherfield. Kelly Road, I got some big concrete pipes that I took up somewhere else, and they're a little bit rough. But Kelly Road, the only thing I know to do is just try to put those in there, and I'll try to fix them the best I can, because the beavers, I can't do anything with them. We got good pipes, actually got good pipes in that whole area. And we just like to get something that we can clean out right there. Kelly, there's a lot of road goes across Kelly out that pond, once it's dumped in there. I'm gonna try to use those big concrete pipes to carry that water over. I would like to see if we could start on that, and you know, naturally, we gotta pay for some of this out of T-splosh.
Yeah, stuff has been put off for years, you know, that need to be done, and it's caught up.
And this is gonna take, this is gonna be kind of a lengthy thing with all the amount of dirt that we're gonna have to haul in there, build. You take from that ditch down to Kelly Crossing on Griffin Sherfield right there, that's probably getting close to a half a mile. And we gonna have to bring that road up probably about three foot and get some good thirty-six inch pipes, something that the backhoe can get into the shovel, that trash on through. And then where she's talking about down that road, you got to come up three or four foot down there, we gonna take it a section at a time. You know, cause it's, we gonna close, have to close a section at a time, but it is really, that's, that's, it, when it rains, that's one of the roads I know I'm going to. And it's, it's not got where it's cutting everybody off that can't get, you can't come in this way, you can't come in, it's, it's just gonna become a problem. So that, I got a quote on the pipes, about ninety-five hundred dollars worth of pipes. If y'all wanna buy them one section at a time, I'll do that. You know, we'll take a section, we'll work on that section, when we get that section done, I'll do it any way y'all, y'all wanna do it. But we have got to start on that road, and then we discussed it before, Laden's got a, Newberry Chambers Road got some pipes. We got Glass Road got some pipes, and Jeff's gonna have some problems probably later on. I'd like to ever three, three to four months, take a project, I'm sorry, the city's got you.
One thing, one thing we need to look at, is Andy's route, is that we need to give him authority to do this stuff, you know, to make decisions, you know? If it's a big project, they say, you know, ten, five dollars, whatever that he call before us. You know, he needed to be given the authority to run it, because it had been took away from him over a period of time. And Andy knows. And Andy knows more about this county, these roads than anything else than anybody else, you know what I mean? Cause if it don't get done, it falls on his head. You know, and I'd like to see a motion made if we turn this road department over to Andy for him to run it, cause he done it for years. And one thing about Andy more, he don't throw money away. He gets out there and he'll pull his sleeves up and he goes at it because y'all see him working on some of that regular equipment he got. He may work on it two or three days and run a half a day, but he works on it.
Right out it is what it is, but we, uh, we have got to come up with a plan for it to be better. And our two biggest, our two biggest priorities, far as I'm concerned. Is these projects that we were talking about, these places are getting to where they're gonna be dangerous. And the limb cutting, that is, that is on everybody's mouth that drives down a dirt road in this county. Everybody wants it done. And it's not gonna happen overnight, but we, I do not see where we can stay running one machine. And I've, I've run this machine, this second machine, I run it long as I can. But with the amount of tractors and things I have, I try to run it during the winter time. Then I, when the mowing comes side the road, I have to pull it so it goes back to one. But we need to look at changing that some too, cause, um. That priority is about more than to mow inside the highway. I mean, and we've just neglected it over the years. So, either we can do it now, we can start cutting them back now. Or either we can wait and we won't have to buy mowers, we'll just buy bulldozers and excavators and go take them back. I mean, we have the opportunity now to try to cut them back. But if we keep just ignoring it, it's gonna become a problem that is not gonna be easily correct. And I think Lathan can verify, a tree, a tree in seventeen years that I've been here, a tree that was growing side the road. Has grown considerably and there's no way one limb cutter can cut six hundred miles of road. We bet, it runs every day. We do a good job of keeping it running. I think Ms. Christine's probably seen it here lately, cause it's. Over in her neighborhood running. On the guy that runs, and he takes real good care of it. You can pretty much heat out the floor of his machine every day. I hate, he can get in it and move it for it. Um, I don't know how he gets in it without no dust on his shoes, but he, somehow he does that, but. He does a real good job running, but we just definitely need to sit down, come up with a plan. Um, and look at replacing some of this stuff. And I know we can't do it overnight. I wouldn't come and ask you to. I wouldn't come and ask you to jump out there on a pile of equipment overnight, but. But what I talked to some of them about was it's a gradual thing, working into it, but we got to start somewhere. And the truck deal. It kinda got sprung on me about like I sprung it on y'all, because you, when a truck leaves out and it comes back. It can have a problem that it didn't have when it left. And I'm, I'm repairing as many problems as I can. Some of us sat down and looked at our budget and our, our budget's not gonna keep sustaining while we're doing. We're running forty-one pieces of equipment. We have forty thousand dollars a year to keep it running. That's change oil in it, put tires on it, fix any problem that is, that's less. That's less than a thousand dollars per machine. And it costs nine hundred dollars every time I pull that motor grader through there. About every third time, we change all the hydraulic filters. Air filters, oil filters, about every third, third time we change oil in it, it's nine hundred bucks.
Andy, on this tractor mower here. Somehow, you know, we'd already voted last year to proceed, you know, in a fight for the second grant, you know, for it. Well, somehow or another. It did get signed.
It got completed, but we didn't sign it. I don't know if it was because we didn't have the additional bids or we didn't have. You guys didn't tell you where you wanted to take it out of. But, but all I did was I've already changed it, I've already replaced Mr. Craig, Mr. Allen's with Mr. Craig's name, so we're ready to go on that. I just need a. I gotta get a price before I can.
I can, I can give y'all a price on that if y'all wanna look at them. I took three quotes on that because I knew that that was gonna be ready. And as I said, I wouldn't have sprung the truck thing on you, but I do know that that's. It's, it's becoming very urgent and I don't, I'd like to use the grant. Cause then that money is paid for. You know, I know we'll use a little toothbrush money as we take it in, but. If you pay fifty thousand, grant pays fifty thousand, that's better than going out and spending a hundred and something thousand dollars out of our money on vehicles. I'd like to stretch it out, but if we don't get started on it. With the long process that it's already gonna take, that's, that's why I asked for that tonight. And I was, we were all planning to talk to y'all about. You know, coming up with a, we got to come up with a plan to help us move forward.
Andy, tell us about the quotes on the tractor mower.
I'll let y'all look at them. Um, I was kind of amazed at it myself. I'll just let y'all look at them. And, um, you make up your own mind. It was, and I was kind of amazed myself. And these are apples for apples. They're, I gave Shelley a list of what for to be on them. They're the same, mowers the same, tractors same. They're all equipped exactly the same. And that's the three quotes. I'd have to put my glasses on to see them. At which, if you want me to say them out loud, I don't.
Say them out loud.
Um, Sun South in Donsonville with ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. That's for the tractor and the mower. Uh. Ag Pro was a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and one cent. That's some in Bainbridge. Flint here in Cockwood. Was a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. And I do say again, this. Does this quote and this quote and this quote are supposed to be exactly the same thing? There's no, there's no discre, no, no difference in none of them. They're all the same machine.
The only thing is John Neffley does golf, does have the stuff installed, but not yet. I can't justify that, Cameron.
Have you given them a chance to match the other quotes?
Who is that?
If you give.
Yeah.
Cockwood a chance?
I haven't, but, um.
They were, they said they can't do anything with it.
But, um, they are the same, that is the only difference. I will say Cockwood does have the tractors, mowers, if you wanted it tomorrow, you could go get it. Bainbridge and Donsonville are about the same, um, you know, it's a process. It may be, the mower was pretty much three to four months out with both of them, the tractor.
Let me see, let me see.
Could, could be six months. Um. But if you're gonna go with the grant, the grant's gonna be six, seven months out too. So, I mean.
You know, you looking at what?
And I'm not, I'm not just rammed down now, you know, I can start mowing and try to work to that point. Um. Twenty some, twenty thousand dollars to buy me another pickup truck with the grant. So, I mean, that's, that's a lot of savings.
And it's the exact same.
Exact same thing. I gave, I gave her a list, which I went over it talking to some of them. That's exactly the same list, that exact same thing added to the same exact tractor. Exact, exact thing. Everybody was asked for the same thing.
You looking at months for get your grant money anyhow, you know. So, you know, you don't have to wait anyhow to get the tractor stuff. So, you know, my suggestion would be to go ahead and go with a low bid and then let them know that we're moving forward with it. Don't worry about it. Cause twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
I like to trade local, but, uh, we got to be responsible for, take their money and spend it wisely.
They're pretty close on the mower. They are not a difference. Not even they are not a difference. The tractors, yeah, the tractors the big difference.
I asked, the quotes I asked for standard, you know, is it always what it comes standard? I asked for ten weights on the front, a grill guard on the front, some flashing light on the top.
I'm gonna ask a question here, cause I do know a little bit about tractors. Why do you want a sixty-one oh five? Why is, why that number?
It is just big enough to pull the mower.
So, you want, you want an eighty-seven horsepower tractor? Is that what you want?
Whether, the mower kinda calls for right at that. That's just a hair bigger, um, than what the mower calls to run. And, and that's what we.
You want a five thousand series then?
Well, that wound up being what we got the last time and.
You didn't like the five thousand series?
It's a little bit small when you get down in the ditch, but that mower's a little heavy for it, trying to, especially when it rains.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little bit light trying to pull it out of that ditch. Like, I mean, I.
I'm just asking.
If you was on the flat, yes. I mean, that ditch, that, that tractor, you get into five thousand series, it'll pull it out there in the pasture just fine.
Yeah.
But it's just a little light when we go behind where these irrigation systems just water corn for three months. And you really don't kill it with the grass there and you kinda get a little tight. That tractor's a little bit light trying to.
What if you had, what if you had a five thousand and didn't take it to those places? Make sure it stays. I'm just, I'm just asking quick.
It's kinda aggravating trying to make, what I'm trying to go to with the hill we got. Is I want to make a pass down this side of the road, turn around and a pass back and they're done. One faller and done. Um. And you basically, and, and be honest, I'd like to keep them the same where I don't have to keep the one everything to go on.
Okay.
Mower's the same, but, um, we gonna run a Rhino mower, which that's what we bought first time. I want another Rhino mower where when I put stuff on that truck. Wheel bearings, whatever, I don't have to keep two sets of spare tires.
Right.
I'm, I'm trying to run these things the same.
I'll just, I'll just ask.
I, I thought about that myself and, and actually talked about it, but it kinda just doesn't. We, when we had the other smaller tractors, we stayed out there pulling them out of bogs all the time. When we stepped up to a little bigger tractor. You know, that had a little weight to help them get out of that ditch. We didn't go quite as big, but I weighted the tractor down a little bit. You know, when I bought, when I, or wanted to buy them, I'm putting some extra weights on them where they'll have a little bit of.
You got watering tires and all that?
Yeah. Watering the tires and I put ten weights on the front. And tried to weight these tractors down just a little bit to, cause the other tractors really wasn't weighted down. They didn't have anything on them. So, I was trying to compensate and go a little bit smaller.
Just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, if we was out on the flat all the time, but we go in some pretty rough spots out there in that ditch. And, um, sometime you need that horsepower.
I guess what Doug got down here, we need to change the names of Greg Freeman, Alan Worsley, you know, to be beside that grant that we had already, you know, applied for. We'd already voted on. So, we have a motion for that.
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? So, Andy, what you gonna do? Try to get a game plan together and all this, sit down and talk about it?
That, you know, I, I fully agree with Ms. Nick, which I discussed that with y'all the other night, you know, we kinda just was talking about it. That, and that's one reason I kinda come here. The truck deal wasn't really that much expected, but. I do have one that's fixing to let me down and I really don't have anything else to. I don't have anything to take its place. We've not replaced them. You know, o- over the years, we just let them go and nothing's been put back in their place to. There's about not anything, if one goes down now, there's not a replacement for it. And these trucks are some that takes a lot to replace them because I got a bunch of stuff on them. And Lathan will tell you, and Alan, then when you go to pull an air compressor, toolboxes. When you make that change over on a truck, you really don't wanna make it every other day. You gotta wanna fix it up and let it go. That's sort of where the truck thing come from. I'd like for y'all to set a time to where, when y'all want to all see if we can get together and sit down.
I'll get a date.
On this tractor here, we, we, we see they the big difference in the price. We wanna go ahead and make a move to go ahead and lock this truck into this price, cause we've seen what's happened in the past. It just kept going up, you know, this last one cost us what, Andy, about what, thirty thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, from the time we started on it to the time we actually decided to do it, we actually lost about thirty thousand dollars between the two, you know, from us. And that was all our fault, us waiting. That was a third of buying another one.
We have to go ahead and finance it through somewhere now and then pay it when we get the money if he goes ahead.
Can you do that?
You just have to pay financial.
I'm talking about with the grant, can you go ahead and buy it and finance it?
Yeah, the grant, as long as you just have the, uh, the invoice and, uh, serial number there fine with that.
Okay.
It's just if you wait, if you try to lock it in now, wait eight months down the road, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it's gonna be gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, no doubt, no doubt.
So, that would be my recommendation, go ahead and lock that in at that, at ninety, you know, ninety-four, ninety-five thousand dollars and go ahead and get that. The moving, you know, get it on the, on the road.
What were you talking about getting it out of toothbrush?
Let's make it out of toothbrush, you ain't got none.
Toothbrush, it had to come out of toothbrush.
For the trucks.
He talking about the tractor.
He talking about the tractor mower now, you know. But whenever we do the trucks, you know, I.
I say we wait two weeks to do all this and we'll talk about it at this meeting in two weeks, is what I'm saying. What you think, Jeff?
Sounds like Mr. Andy needs a way to get out to these sites.
I know, I'm just saying, discuss it all in the meeting.
The tractor thing, if y'all wanna do it, I, I just was wanting to get started on the truck thing, cause it's, it's eight months away from even having one. But if you set it another month, another month, another.
Lock in that price right there.
You know, all, all I wanna do is apply for.
So, you want to, so tonight you want us to make a motion to, to apply for the grant? Is that right?
I really, I want you to think about it. I mean, yes, if you just wanna do it, that's fine. But I'm just saying, you know, if y'all want to sit down and really let's look at. The future things and what they're gonna cost and where the money's gonna come from and things like that.
Well, how long this is gonna stand on the table though?
I don't have a problem with waiting myself. I'm just saying, you know, I got some problems that's coming up that I don't know that I can fix. They may turn into catastrophic problems and I'm not gonna have something to replace it with. And we got to start at some point in time. We got to start looking at what is our priority to, to make a change on. And that is one thing right there that's be, becoming a priority just out of need. Um, then the limb cutting thing is just a, you know, that's, that's a long-term problem that we got to start working on to fix. But if y'all want to pick a time and us sit down and really go over what we think is a, a, a twelve-month plan, a two-year plan. Or whatever y'all wanna do, I, I'm open for any.
Doug, how long do you think you'd be, have to take a check with the city on their vehicles or stuff like that? We'll get an idea of.
They, they've got, um, the, I guess you'd call it, the higher-end trucks are already ready. Uh, they're waiting on the Dodge trucks for the public works and then those will become available. So, Cory said it could be anytime now. I'll check with him in the morning and see.
Get an idea about what they gonna want for them, you know.
And get him here and, and talk to him.
If the grant will even cover used vehicles or whatever.
Yeah, we can beat him up on rights.
I'm just trying to look at a cheap option, you know, for the county and, and spend the money wisely. And this grant money is one way to spend it wisely. Um, cause if you buy one, get one free, can't get much better than that.
Sounds like a plan.
I really didn't just come asking you to really do something tonight. I just kinda wanted you to start looking at. You know, that, that's something that's been doing.
Y'all just hold off until we get all this information together, meet with Andy and then we move forward.
Yes.
Do y'all wanna do it?
We don't wanna wait too long, cause we wanna keep this on the table.
Do y'all wanna do it the week of the twenty-seventh through the third? And if so, just pick a day, cause I'm afraid that that, any of them.
What day was that, that we had to take the picture?
Uh, that's the twenty-fourth. I mean, if y'all wanna do it that day.
That'd probably be a good, we all be together.
Twenty-seventh, twenty-third, what'd you say, twenty?
I mean, do y'all wanna do it the twenty-fourth? Y'all already gonna be here. I've got to advertise the meeting anyway.
Yeah, we'll do the twenty-fourth, yeah. We already here.
Twenty-fourth, you need to get all your stuff. Twenty-fourth, have all your stuff ready.
I got you.
And I'll, I should know something from Cory then.
And I say check, make sure that they will help us with the grant on used truck stuff.
And it's like, I got to do that.
All right, well, we'll move on then. Let's move to, we need to do a detective session.
Uh, before y'all go, before we go, the Griffin Sherfield thing is something I'd like to get started on. If y'all wanna do it a section at a time. I do need to buy probably half of that pipe.
Yeah, I'd go ahead and do that, that worst section first, you know.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do that worst section.
The section that me and you talked about.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, I'm gonna have to close it and I don't wanna kill everybody. I don't wanna kill the farming on it. I do wanna leave, try to leave everybody away in, but that's gonna be three sections. And then I'm gonna have to close Kelly to do it.
Well, we need, we need a motion written and to proceed forward then, let him buy the pipe he needs to do it. Then we have a motion.
I have a motion.
I don't think we gotta have a motion for him to do his job.
All in favor?
Uh, I don't have any money for piping.
So, where are we taking it out of?
We're taking it out of toothbrush. That's the only place you can get it.
Out of T-Slosh. There's no money in Slosh because we paying payments on it, I mean, it'll, it'll have to come out of T-Slosh.
We have a motion by Chris, Ms. Christine, Ms. Nikki second, and all in favor?
Uh.
Motion carried, and proceed. All right, then we need to go into executive session, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make, I'll go ahead.
You go.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say.
All right.
We're going to.
The purpose of going to closed session would discuss surplus and some property and putting it up for sale. And, uh, we need a motion to move forward, to put up the, I guess you'd call it Ag Barn, or that would be the correct name?
The property.
Your property up for sale, you know, for bid, with the right to reject in and all bids if it does not leak. Um, Mr. Cahu, did you say you want to put a starting point on it?
Yeah, I would think so, what, what you think?
One point five.
Let's start it.
All right.
Make the motion.
All right, we need a motion to put that property surplus for sale at starting bid of one point five million dollars, with the right to refuse any and all bids. You know, the commissioner has the right to refuse them, do we have a motion for that? Uh, we all, motion passed, so I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.